I dare you.
Okay, we are ready to go. I have no idea why everybody's here, but... There's a... See, Mr. Meisner, I'm not calling your name for the last time, alright? So, well, welcome. Welcome to the first regular city council meeting for the year 2020. How many of you thought you were going to make it to 2020? Be honest now, huh? So, wow, January 6th, 2020. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran, here. Councilmember Gonzalez, here. Councilmember Hammack, here. Councilmember Haques, here. Councilmember Meisner, here. Councilmember Turner, here. Mayor Pro Tim Smith, here. Mayor Troutman, here.
Would you put your eyes for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I would then entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting for December 16th, 2019, and general government meeting, too, for December 11th, 2019, and the special city council meeting, December 18th, 2019. Did we go home for Christmas? Did we?
What?
Did we actually go home for... That's a lot of meetings in December.
We were busy.
Did we get overtime? Didn't?
I didn't get any overtime.
I got everyone's overtime.
Ryan is not laughing at this, so he apparently has the budget. Alright, I would ask for a motion and a second for approval of those minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes.
Sir, thank you. Second, Mr. Hammack, thank you. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran, aye. Councilmember Gonzalez, aye. Councilmember Hammack, aye. Councilmember Haques, aye. Councilmember Meisner, aye. Councilmember Turner, aye. Mayor Pro Tim Smith, aye.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we are going to... Oh my goodness, I hadn't seen this on the agenda. Swearing the new elected officials and the mayor? Who put this on my agenda? So, but before we do that, I'd like to just make a few comments that I thought was interesting. Sometimes I think things are interesting and you have no idea what I'm talking about. In January 2016, I made a speech, and there were several things in that speech. I always wondered where we were at and did we accomplish anything, or what have we talked about back then? And here were some of the priorities that I had laid out to the council, and some of you were there, I believe. The number one was public infrastructure. At that time, we were looking at streets that were... People complaining about potholes and streets that weren't to be done, and we knew that we needed to find some way to fund that. Just normal funding and taking money out of the budget really wasn't working. It hadn't worked for years. And so, with the help of all of you, support, and people in the audience, and Mayor Pro Tim Smith, we went ahead and got a tax passed for the streets. And I think all of you have noticed through Canyon City that there's a lot of street work being done. And that was one of the things. The next one was collaboration. One of the things that I've noticed through my well-over-forty years of being in business around here is that we're a small county. We could take an advantage of, I believe, by large counties. It's no news there. But the fact is, if you're separated into different groups and you're angry and you're not talking to each other, it's gonna get worse. So, one of the things in here was for collaboration. I think right now, we have some of the best collaboration, coordination, cooperation among... Between council, the county, council of governments, and all the bodies that are involved with making things the very best in Fremont County for everyone. And I think that we should be very proud of that. But that was one of the points that we were going to do. Now, do we always agree? No. If we all agreed, that would be a problem. But at least the disagreements are small, and we tend to move on and do things best. I didn't know of anyone on any council now, or any member that was here, that I could say truthfully had an axe to grind, or a specific issue that would be against the residents of the county and the city. And I'm very proud of that. This has been a council that I enjoyed working with. It really, we did disagree, and we were quite vocal at times. But at the end of the day, those disagreements came together for the betterment of Canyon City, and in fact, Fremont County. We are the largest town in Fremont County. I'm proud of that. It's been a pleasure, truly, to work with all of you and the people that, you know, Dennis Weed and all the other ones that were here that didn't run again. So, that's been a real pleasure. So, you need to keep that. You need to keep that cooperation and discussion. To the new members that are coming on, it is vitally important. We talked about things like I talked about and said, "We need to do something with the River Corridor Plan." We're doing that. Another thing, downtown development. Doing that. Economic development. We hired a young man who came in here and did a tremendous job. He is hiding behind a beard, so we don't know who he is. Ryan, thank you. Truly, thank you for coming here. You came from a town that you were well-rooted in and did a wonderful job for them. And you're doing it again here for Canyon City, not only as economic development director at that time, but now as our new city administrator. Ryan is a pleasure to work with. He's a very intelligent young man. And again, I'm very proud to have known you and continue to know you, and to be, hopefully, ever ask if you need help, I'm here. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We had a vision about Canyon City and what it would look like, about a community that is superior in many areas, one of which, one of which I'm very proud of, is our school system. If you've not had the opportunity to get involved, to go to schools or be involved in a class, please do that. Go to the schools. Look what we have here. We will have new schools, two new schools, and a community this size, in a school system that excels, excels in education and the future of our children. They're the building blocks that we're gonna have. You know, we spend thousands and thousands of dollars educating our youth. We should give them the best education we can. I'm convinced that we are, and it's coming from our school system here. I have threatened them on several occasions that the students, "We're giving... We're helping you out. We're giving you a great education. You better come back and make it better for your community." In my business, I hear all too often that they've spent 30 years creating a business and doing something somewhere else. "Why didn't you do it in Canyon? I never thought about it." So, think about it. If you do have an opportunity, pay attention. Go in there and see. I have. I think I've been to every class at our school system. And believe me, I'm extremely proud of what's going on there and what will continue. We have a junior college. Go visit that. See what's going on here. There's a lot happening. That was part of our vision. And I think I've talked enough, but that will continue. And again, I was so blessed to have people to work with here because I have a full-time job. They all have full-time jobs. Well, maybe John doesn't, but... He has a full-time retirement, which I don't think I could ever do. But, a lot of hours. I was six years on the planning commission and then of course, four years as mayor. I truly had no idea. But the dynamics have changed. The demands, the problems, the successes have changed. And that requires time. And I want to thank the staff. This council, and you in the audience, have a wonderful staff. I have yet... Again, we don't always agree, and they'll attest to that. But when asked, the quality product is amazing. And I mean that. And they need to be congratulated, and I hope they stay. One more thing. I have this on my desk that I read every day. It's on my desk. I brought it with me. Says, "When you find passionate people and they put their minds together, awesome things begin to happen." We have that in Canyon City. We have that in Fremont County. What a great place to be. So, enough. Let's move on. Let's go into... I'd like to call... So, what I'm doing here, I'd like to invite Tim Dennehy up to the front here. Jim Meisner, Andy Reid. No, you have to go down there. The mayor has said that, at least for the next few minutes. Brendan Smith, and of course, Ashley. And I would then invite the city clerk to administer the oath of office.
Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and the laws of the State of Colorado, and the Charter ordinances, laws and regulations of the City of Canyon City, and will faithfully perform the duties of the office upon which I am about to enter to the best of my ability. Congratulations. I need you to sign your oaths, please.
Thank you. And while they're doing that, I would like to thank, I'm going to thank Amanda Cochran for... No, you don't have to go anywhere. You're going to leave too quickly. Amanda and her beautiful little girl, Kaitlin Turner. Thank you, Kaitlin. I so appreciated you as well. Thank you so much. And that's it. So, we changing? Alright. Oh, Dolly Gonzalez, your name came up on my sheet here. My... Did you want to say something? Okay. We get to play musical chairs now, a little bit?
I guess.
Where are you at, Tim? Right here? Whoa. I'm gonna miss you, Mr. Ray. Congratulations, Frank. That's the worst thing we do, Frank. Thanks, John. Remember, you said... A little closer over here now. Let's see you get out of hand now. Oh, did she? Oh, really? You feel secure with John and I sitting beside you now?
I sure do.
It's gotta be... Not that you would ever be intimidated, but sitting between these two anal guys has gotta be...
I gotta keep you guys...
Yeah, that's right.
Alright, before council members leave, I do want to be able to, just to take a minute to say thank you to Mayor Troutman, the outgoing council members, Turner and Cochran. It's been such a pleasure to serve with each and every one of them, and I'm gonna miss them greatly. Mayor Troutman, he really did create a legacy for us and a sure foundation that we can build on as we continue to move forward in Canyon City. And he topped it off with that perfect top hat of a mayor, which I will never be able to fulfill, or fill that hat. And he was always approachable with an incredibly warm handshake. He sincerely loved every single person in Canyon City on a pretty much a name-by-name basis. But with that, he balanced it with sometimes a hard head, that it was necessary at times for accountability and to ensure that there was less government intrusion and red tape. And Councilman Turner, she brought with us her expertise as an attorney, that we called upon that many times as she worked on our behalf. And she's now been selected by Governor Polis to be our district attorney, and that's a position that I fully support you in, Councilman Turner, and grateful for your service there. And Councilman Cochran, she is our youngest council member that we had, yet she really made sure that we were fiscally conservative, asked a lot of hard questions. And she also held us to the highest ethics. And she was steadfast in that, both as council and for our community as well. And she is now fulfilling a higher calling as a new mother. And they both served us very well, and I'm grateful. As an old council overall, it has been an awesome ride to be together. Together, we've celebrated the Small Business Revolution, the Governor's Award for Best Festival, popular new trails. New businesses have started. Older buildings are being purchased and beautifully renovated. The streets are getting fixed, and stormwater flooding is finally getting addressed. I'm proud of this council and the things that we've done, but I'm also eagerly looking forward to working with the new council. There's a lot of energy and momentum that's happening that we are building on to get a lot of hard things done and a lot of really amazing things done, too. With this new council, we're also starting a new decade. And in 2020 is also our 150th year anniversary for Canyon City. And in honor of this milestone, I really want to make sure that we work hard towards giving Canyon City a makeover, and the type of makeover where we have a new reputation of being business-friendly and for welcoming new businesses and creating tools for them to be able to come in for new businesses and restaurants, revamping the codes so that they are simplified and easy to navigate. And also, for me, I would like to see a community recreation center with an indoor swimming pool, and also be able to humanely address homelessness and our public safety issues. So, there's a lot of amazing things on our horizon. And with all these new things, also being mindful of looking ahead to the future for possible economic downturns, if it could be, and also international things that are happening in this world that affects Canyon City as well. And then I know that we will be responsible and mindful of each and every one of these things. And it will take the strength of this dais to accomplish that, but also want to say thank you to every single person in this audience, the friends and the family, the community members that came to support the old council and the new council coming in. Just as the mayor said, we need to get an awesome group of people together, and great things will happen. And you guys are that awesome group of people that we are able to make that happen together. The old council knows that it takes a pretty strong backbone and thick skin to serve in this capacity. There's not a lot of thanks. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of time. It's a lot of research, and it's a lot of sacrifice. And the rewards are awesome, but it's not possible without the support from our friends and family that are here in this audience today. And so, we really want to make sure that I acknowledge and thank you and our community for that. With that said, we do have a lot of ambitions and a lot of things to do, and I'm ready to get started as the new mayor of Canyon City to get those things done. And I'd like to start, as our first order of business, I need to ask for a nomination for our new mayor pro tem. Councilmember Meisner.
Madam mayor and council, I would like to nominate John Hammack as our mayor pro tem.
Are there any other nominations? I would be proud and privileged to have John working by my side as the mayor pro tem.
Thank you.
And would like to call for a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Haques?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reid?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro... Oh, Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tim Hammack. Alright, now we have... We're gonna conduct our normal business meeting for city council. You're welcome to stay if you wish to. You're not obligated to. But we are... The first 15 minutes are dedicated to public comment. If you wish to speak, you're welcome to take the microphone and have an opportunity to address city council.
Congratulations, John.
Congratulations.
All you folks that are leaving, we do appreciate that you were here. Grab some more goodies on your way out.
Okay, so let's go ahead and have our city administrator, who is... This is your first meeting as well, acting as their official administrator for Canyon City. Congratulations to you as well.
Thank you.
You're also an important part of the exciting new times for Canyon City. That's absolutely right. Yeah, so we're gonna have you review the consent agenda, please.
Actually, you have item 10, council member announcements. Did you want to cover those first?
We do have general government meeting that you'll be conducting.
So, we do have a general government meeting on January 8th at 6:00 PM here.
And I understand that council may want to move those meetings to 5:00 PM?
Would you like to start with 5:00 PM this Wednesday?
I would be in favor, yes.
Okay, so let's go ahead and plan on 5:00 PM this Wednesday from now on. And we've also talked about... And I know, we'll understand if Jim's a little bit late. He has to hustle from his full-time job.
Because I leave at 5:00, too. I leave my job at 5:00.
Yeah, I don't think you'll miss a whole lot. We'll just see how it goes, and we can adjust accordingly. We're also looking at changing the second Wednesday meetings, the general government two meetings, but we're still figuring out how that'll look. Right now, we already have some important subjects to cover, so for the next two, maybe three months, we'll still be having those, as is. Well, they are already here. I will let our administrator fill us in on those things.
Fill us in on...
The important topics we have coming for general government, too, and go ahead and move on to our consent agenda as well.
Okay. So, for general government, too, we have booked out those topics for the next three months. I don't have that list in front of me right now, but I can send that out to council.
I mean, are they director-related topics? If they're not, I suggest we move those to regular government meetings.
We do have director-related topics.
Alright.
So, in January, for instance, is the police update on the action plan and the co-responder program, as well as an update from Chief Harvey. And I can get you the list of the rest of them. Horse trails and trestles, and, you know, another update from the Parks Department is February 12th.
Our next meeting is stormwater raids.
Yeah, and the general government one meeting on Wednesday is stormwater raids.
We're starting off on some pretty exciting topics for our new council members.
Alright, moving on to the consent agenda, mayor and members of council. 11A is the mayor appointments for the various committees. That's by acclamation. 11B authorizes the extension of bids 1317 for solid waste removal, 1417 landfill disposal site, and 1517 septic tank and vault toilet pumping to Twin Enviro Services. 11C authorizes the extension of bid 4217 for crack and chip seal to A1 chip seal. 11D authorizes the extension of bid 618 janitorial services to the Clean Company. 11E authorizes the extension of bid 3018 lawn maintenance services to Yard Crafters. 11F awards bid 2 of 20 aggregate to the aggregate source in the amount not to exceed 82,000. 11G awards bid 320 asphalt to Martin Marietta and Keewatt in an amount not to exceed 60,000. 11H awards bid 420 concrete to Fremont paving and ready mix in an amount not to exceed 53,000. 11I awards bid 520 flow fill to Fremont paving and ready mix in an amount not to exceed 16,500. 11J awards bid 620 traffic control signs to Custom Products Corporation of Jackson, Mississippi in an amount not to exceed 30,000. 11K awards bid 720 chlorine to DPC Industries in an amount not to exceed 20,000. 11L awards bid 820 aluminum sulfates to Chemtrade Chemicals in an amount not to exceed 75,000. 11M awards bid 920 NELCO 8102. 11M awards bid 920 NELCO 8102 Plus to the NELCO Company in an amount not to exceed 19,577. 11N authorizes the job description for senior arborist technician. 11O authorizes the city administrator to sign an engagement letter for the 2A Street Improvement Fund Audit Contract in an amount not to exceed 3,000. 11P authorizes the mayor to sign the 2019 Audit Engagement Letter with Hinkle and Company PC in an amount not to exceed 21,000. 11L authorizes the mayor to sign, or 11Q, sorry, authorizes the mayor to sign a contract with Zia Rides, aka Mountain Bike Southwest LLC, for a mountain bike event at the Royal Gorge Park on Saturday, May 16th. Staff is going to ask to remove 11R, the Economic Development Job Description, to a later date, and 11S receives and file the list of bills.
Councilmember Dolly Gonzalez, do you have a question?
I have, I have several. Somehow, I got my numbers and letters and everything mixed up. But on item F, I believe it's F, for Yard Crafters, are they the company that does the lawn care at the cemeteries as well?
No, the cemetery we do in-house. These are smaller sites like City Hall, the police.
All right. And then on the arborist, I have it listed as O, but I'm showing now that that's in. They're all screwed up. Anyways, on O. You had to move the minutes. Oh, okay. That's why we're confused. So will we continue to contract out arborist services within the city as well?
So for the majority of the forestry work we're going to be bringing in-house, we will have a small contract with an outside vendor for projects that we can't handle internally or projects or trees that might be outside of the range of our high ranger.
So personally, I'd kind of like to see the cost difference between hiring somebody in-house and paying for benefits full-time as compared to having a contracted company come in and take care of the.
And when we went through the budget process, we did have that comparison. I don't have it here in front of me, but it was more cost-effective to have it internal because for about the same amount of money, we were able to have a year-round staff working on the trees versus a contract that, you know, number one, the company was coming out of Colorado Springs, and number two, you know, they weren't year-round. So, you know, what we're really focusing on is, you know, trying to take care of the trees year-round and, again, creating jobs and keeping some of those taxpayer dollars here in the community.
And then on the budget, I read something, an Amazon purchase for nearly $4,000 for miscellaneous services or expenses?
I think it was office supplies.
It's, should be office supplies.
Office supplies, okay.
And I think it was.
How did you find that?
How did I find what?
That it was office supplies?
It was, I just did this? No. Because it says, well, I assumed. It says miscellaneous supplies, and it's from Amazon. So I just assumed from some previous conversations that that was part of everybody buying office supplies. It was $3,999.03.
Okay.
So that was an assumption.
Yeah, I don't specifically know that it's office supplies, but that would be my assumption as well. We do have our purchasing agent in negotiated rates with Amazon, so.
It's a good point, though.
All right, that's it. Thank you.
Because don't we have an office supplies category?
I thought so. That's why I questioned, because it just seemed, it says miscellaneous.
At least shows up on the budget.
And that $4,000 for miscellaneous kind of springs, it kind of screams to me.
We can double-check and get back to you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Meisner?
Item, I'm going to say, I'm not going to call them by number, because I think the numbers are messed up or the letters, but the Fremont Paving and Ready Mix bid and the traffic control signs, or the, yeah, and custom products. This is minor, but they need to clean up the verbiage on those letters, because it says that there was only one bid in those letters, but then it goes on to say that we're going to, if that bidder can't supply us with the product, we're going to go to the second bidder, and there is no second bidder. So I'm curious as to what you would do in that situation to try to find that second bidder, based on the verbiage. And then my other question is, is in regards to item K, that's not K, it would actually be item J. Have we had any discussions with CCI about what services they offer?
For the flow fill?
No, for item J, well, we need to get these things straightened out. The traffic control signs. K. I'm using the new agenda. I'm talking about bid 620 for traffic control signs and custom products, corporation, two custom products. My question is, have we done any contact with CCI?
Colorado Correction Industries.
Right, about their abilities to fulfill some of that at a lesser price. We keep talking about it.
Yeah, I know that that has been mentioned before. I will have to double-check and see if we've had any discussions recently.
Adam, do you have any input on that? They have ability to put a bid in, though, don't they?
They do.
Do you have any more questions?
I think not.
Okay, then we'll move to councilmember Haquez.
Thank you. See, she's on the bomb. I told her about pushing the button, and they'll hear you, and I didn't have my button pushed. That was a test. You passed. On position rifle workshop for weapons training, I mean, what does that have to do separate from the, doesn't the police department have their own people to train on weapons? I'd just like to have an explanation for that $1,300.
Yeah, and I will have to check specifically on what that is, but I will do that and get back to you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
And any other comments or questions from council members? I have a couple of questions. Ryan, on the Fremont Paving and Ready Mix for concrete needs for the calendar 2020, do you happen to know what type of concrete needs we're anticipating? Is that an annual expense?
Yeah, I'll ask Adam to come up and talk about.
What concrete needs will we be anticipating for 2020?
So all those material bids are for materials used by the Public Works Department and also the water department for their projects. So concrete, typically that's going to be used for most of our miscellaneous concrete projects, handicap ramps, curb replacement, that sort of thing.
Okay, so just standard maintenance.
Yep, sidewalk replacement.
Thank you. And I also just want to make a mention about the new position for an arborist, that it will be nice to see the numbers, maybe at the end of 2020, to see how the comparison is between in-house and contracting out. But it is, I know Rex, I don't know if you want to come up and kind of give a word or two about the importance that this is saving hundreds of trees in our community. Our urban forest is at risk. We are losing a ton of trees. And that's something that makes our community beautiful and valuable, to have that greenery.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we have trees. You can drive anywhere in this town. Just look up, and you can't find a tree that doesn't have a problem of some sort. So this arborist position, we'll be able to work on that year-round versus the contracting that we've done. So, yeah, and it will be interesting to see, you know, just exactly how many trees we're able to do versus contracting, but we'll be able to serve our customers so much better with being able to answer calls and that type of thing.
Any questions for Rex Lyles up here? Go ahead, councilmember Dennehy.
Rex, one thing that I wanted to see, and Ryan as well, is I know that there's a contract with the wood place up on top of Eight Mile.
Yes.
I'm not sure. Is there any other ways that we can participate or maybe help other members of our community with that wood? Or is there a way we could bid out separately, or is that even feasible?
We've had this contract, and it'll come up for renewal, I believe, in April with this gentleman. What we've found in the past is most of the wood that ends up at our storage facility is too big for most people to handle, just for the average Joe to come in and cut up, pick up load of wood. So, you know, because we're talking stumps this big that doesn't, aren't able to go through the grinder. But in, you know, prior to 2013, all that wood was taken to the landfill at a tremendous cost. So we're actually receiving money for surplus wood that we generate through our forestry program. But, you know, as far as selling it for firewood, it's just, it's not the right-sized type of wood for the average person to come in and do.
Right. Obviously, you know, and I've seen a lot of that big wood.
Right.
I didn't know if on any of the smaller stuff, especially with an arborist coming in, because definitely they're going to be trimming out, going a lot smaller. That's really what their function is going to be. So I didn't know if that would, or in, just a thought for anybody in our community, because a lot of people do burn wood.
Yeah, you know, and we have had requests several over the years for, you know, are you using that wood? What are you doing with it? Can we come and get some of it? And, you know, just overall, it's kind of just too big to handle for most people. And, you know, we don't have, wouldn't have time to go out and load people when they show up and that type of thing, so. But I really want to thank the council for this new forestry position, too, actually. We've lost so many trees over the last seven years or so that haven't been replaced. Maybe at another time, we can talk about this, but we do have a tree replacement program that there's not a heck of a lot of money in the budget. 5,000 is what I budgeted this year, and it's for replacement of trees in the city right of way. I haven't received the response that I would like to receive. We've generally given out less than half of the budget each year. And I discussed it briefly with Ryan, but possibly if we offer trees to the public and we have them, put them, plant them in their front yard where they're completely visible from the street on their property, we might generate more interest and get more trees planted in the ground. That's something I'd like council to consider and just to see if that would increase the number of trees that we get in the ground. You know, we wouldn't put them in the backyard where they're not visible from the street. Plus, you put a tree on private property, that becomes their property, and they're responsible for the maintenance of that tree. So it's kind of a win-win, I think, and we can certainly discuss that at a later date.
All right, thank you, Rex Brady. We appreciate all that you do for our parks, and I know that you are passionate about taking care of our urban forest as well, so thank you.
Thank you, and like to welcome all the new council members and Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Pleasant evening.
Are you good, councilman Dennehy? Councilman Meisner, do you have another comment?
I do. I don't know what letter this is, because I'm just going to say that the title description for the Economic Development Manager, is that going to be on the consent agenda or not?
No, we're pulling that from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Any other?
I do have a question on that. As that job description goes forward, and I guess we need to check with the attorney, I mean, that's one of those unique positions that I feel like needs to have some kind of residency requirement on it. But I don't know that the attorney would allow us to do that.
We can talk about it. Why, like a Fremont County residency?
Yeah, I mean, some kind of, yeah.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Just to add to this conversation, we probably would be hiring somebody from another city, maybe even another state, so.
I mean, that's a vital part of this community, and I think that individual should live in close proximity to the community that would hopefully have them a little more engaged and feel the heartbeat of the community versus somebody that lives in Colorado Springs on the north side of town or lives in Avondale.
And I don't know if this is what councilmember Gonzalez is getting at, but you can, like, have the delay, like, they don't need to be here when they're.
Right, yeah, you have a. Six-month or 90-day residency require, yeah, absolutely.
I think we can, we can look at that and try and work something into that when we bring the job description back.
I mean, if council's in, if the flavor of council, kind of like another agreement we just did.
Well, I think we're always, especially in that position, it's important to have them engaged into our community and have that relationship built with our business members. All right, any other comments or questions from council? Otherwise, I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt the consent agenda with an amendment removing item S.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda and the consent agenda removing item R.
It's item S on our new.
Oh, item S, R, okay, item S.
It's item R on the amended amendment.
So what do I say?
You got it.
It doesn't matter, just say it.
Okay.
Now we need a second.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion in the second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Hammerick?
Aye.
Hi, the Smith gets me, and I just lost my vote, so, yeah, sorry, I stole your vote. You have to get used to the councilmember Smith not being me.
Maybe we should say Brandon for a while.
Yeah. All right, so it carried, and now we have our administrators report. Thank you, Ryan.
All right, mayor and members of council, the holiday lull is over. We're gearing up for our 2020 projects. We have projects currently in the works, Urban Renewal Authority. We have postcards that have gone out to property owners that are in the study area. I've started receiving calls, asking questions about what that study is about and what, you know, what we're doing with the Urban Renewal Authority. Positive feedback so far, lots of engagement in the four to five folks that I spoke to today about it. We are also working on the comprehensive plans, the building code update as well. We've got another contractors meeting coming up on January 15th at 2:00 PM. Departments are wrapping up all of the 2019 projects. Finance Department has begun their closing, year-end closing procedures. And then, you know, number three, Dina Svetlik, our Community Development Director, has resigned her post, and that was effective on Friday. So it's part of the reason why I've pulled back the Economic Development Job Description. I'd like to rethink maybe how all those departments interact and work together. We're moving forward with the Colorado Main Street Program. We've got a vision-mission session scheduled for February 24th with stakeholders, and I'll be reaching out to those, to that group this week. And then we'll be following that up on March 9th with. And then, uh, we'll be following that up on March 9th with a, a follow-up session to put together a work plan for downtown and Main Street. And then, uh, finally, the Bureau of Land Management, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, uh, and the city, we, we all got together, together to discuss the, uh, trail connection between Tunnel Drive and the Royal Gorge, uh, park and trail system. We have another, uh, follow-up meeting on Thursday to, to go into more details about that, but it, it does look like we will have, uh, some type of compromise as far as the closure goes. Trying to limit it to the lambing season and, uh, some specific hours during the hunting season.
Okay, council member Meisner?
I was involved in the initial discussions with, uh, whatever you call them, Parks and Wildlife.
CPW, yep.
And it was, as part of that whole compromise was is that, at that point, the city's position with our previous administrator was, is is that we would adhere to the recommendations of what they felt was appropriate in terms of those seasons when we could and could not be up there. And it just concerns me that we're seemingly coming back now and wanting to change those rules about that whole process in terms of how much we're gonna be up there.
Hey, you know, I, I think the, the conversation was very open. Uh, there have been things that have changed as far as hunting seasons go as well, um, you know, uh, which, uh, you know, I think is part of the reason why some of their positions have changed, um, at, at least in regards to the, you know, the closure during the hunting season. Obviously, with the, um, protected habitat for the Rocky Mountain bighorn sheep, um, you know, that lambing season's very important to, um, you know, protect that, that part of, uh, that land. But, um, you know, it, it's been a very open dialogue, and I, I don't, you know, I, I think it's been a, a very good discussion, and, you know, Rex Brady was there with me, uh, as we were having those discussions, and, um, you know, I think, uh, we both walked out of that, uh, out of that meeting pleasantly surprised.
Any other comments from council? Alright, well, I think I, we're, we're ready to go ahead and move on to the discussion for the consideration and adoption by title-only Resolution One Series of 2020. I'd like to invite our administrator to present the staff report.
Yeah, this, uh, resolution is a resolution designating the public place for posting, uh, meeting notices, and, uh, this is pursuant to the Colorado Ri- Revised Statute.
And if I could just add something, Madam Mayor, so there was a change in the law last legislative session. Colorado Open Meetings law used, well, it requires a physical posting, um, location, but now the law, um, encourages that physical location to be the website. And there's gonna be a transition to just online posting eventually, if the legislature doesn't see enough movement in this direction by local governments, so we're just taking that step now. So that will be the official posting place, um, you can post on social media, um, and then if there's an emergency, they'll, they'll be posted physically here, you know, at City Hall.
Any questions or comments from council? Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, uh, yes, so on the designation, the language down there, the last sentence, it says, if there's a known outage or emergency meeting, the, and, and we don't define what outage is, I'm not sure if it's clear in the legislation, but we're talking about an internet outage, is that correct?
Yeah.
So, so maybe it needs to read internet outage rather than just outage, because what does, what does that?
Yeah, we can clarify that, that's not wrong.
Still watch the internet. Still lose the internet.
But it's, I think the intent is that if, if, if the internet is down, that that's, that's when this takes effect.
Okay, I get it, yep.
Because that's what we're designating as our spot.
Okay, councilman Hamrick, would you like to make a motion with the amendment?
Sure, Madam Mayor, the, um, mayor and council, I move that we adopt Resolution Number One Series of 2020 on first reading with the amendment that we add in the final sentence under designation before outage, uh, the word internet. So it reads if there is a known internet outage.
And this, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, we've been to have a motion in a second, I'll call for a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hakes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
I controlled myself that time. Yeah, we have our old habits still. We now have consideration and adoption by title-only Resolution Two Series of 2020. Um, Ryan, would you like to give us a report on that as well?
Yeah, Resolution Two is, uh, a resolution to designate the mayor, the city administrator, and the director of finances authorize co-endorsers for checks, warrants, savings, and invest, investment accounts.
Alright, any discussion from council? I'd like to entertain a motion. Councilmember Meisner?
Mayor and council, I move that we approve Resolution Two Series of 2020 on first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, we have a motion in a second, is there any discussion in the motion? And I'll call for a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hakes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Alright, that's the end, end of our agenda for tonight. Councilman Meisner, do you have a final comment? I just, again, wanna, again, welcome our new council members and our new council as a whole. It's gonna be awesome, I'm looking forward to 2020, working together with you all. Alright, we are adjourned.